Good morning. Test, test, test. Test, test. Good morning councillors, we've got one minute until action time. Top of the morning councillors and everyone listening from home on this fine St Patrick's Day, welcome. I'd like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional custodians on the land on which we're gathered and to pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. Welcome to the City Lifestyle Meeting of the 17th of March and I declare this meeting open at nine AM. I'd like to advise meeting attendees that this meeting is being webcasted and audio recorded. I note that councillor Darren Power has submitted a leave of absence request today due to him attending a delegation with the Council of Mayors. Do any other councillors have any other leaves of absence to declare? There being none, can I have a mover for the motion that councillor Power be granted leave of absence in accordance with section 5.3(c)(3) of the Local Government and Committee Meeting Code? Thank you councillor Raven, can I have a second for the motion? Thank you councillor Bradley, all those in favour please raise your hands and that motion has been carried unanimously. Councillors, we have one item on the agenda today and that's item 4.1, which is a report from the Local Infrastructure Programme, Special Consideration Projects, and we welcome Mr Nigel Brown, who is our Sports Leisure and Facilities Manager, to speak to that item. Before we get into the item itself, do any councillors have any conflicts of interest they wish to declare? There being none, I'll invite Mr Brown to please present his report. Thank you Nigel.
Thank you through the chair. So this report's been brought forward for special consideration under the Local Infrastructure Programme on the basis that the request from the divisional councillor is for the funding for the Beanley PCYC to be provided directly to that association for the delivery of a project. Under the guidelines for the Local Infrastructure Programme, that's not consistent with the guidelines and therefore requires a report to come to council for consideration. In relation to that request, the the funding is for $25,000 per year over two years, both this year and next financial year, and it's to undertake a number of improvements at the Beanley PCYC, which is included in the report. It involves relocation of the current fitness centre, reconfiguration of the cafe to become the 24-hour entrance and other matters as detailed in the report. Normally with this type of project, the, under the LIP programme, it's delivered through my Community Infrastructure Programme, who have project managers to deliver this type of project, and certainly with a project which is more, of a more complex nature, from a risk management perspective, our recommendation would be for council to consider, would continue to deliver that project. So on that basis, the recommendation is that the request for special consideration not be approved, but I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Nigel, I'll start up the batting with councillor Lane.
Thank you and good morning Mr Brown. Just a quick question, if your officers were to undertake these, these works, what would be the difference in the price and the timeframe to deliver it?
So through the chair, given that this project is being delivered over two financial years, our ability to resource that project would be, would be better. At the moment, it's fair to say that our team are under, under pressure with the number of the federal programmes, that Covid's funding, the stimulus packages, but in saying that, we're committed also to delivering the LIP projects as well. In relation to the ability to deliver within budget, the, the point which I'm sure the councillor will also, councillor Murphy will may speak to, is that the Beanley PCYC does have the ability to leverage off their partnerships in the community and, and have demonstrated that ability to convert what would be a council contribution into greater level of funding, so that's probably the aspect which does need to be considered as well. We, we do need to stay consistent with procurement guidelines and, and don't have that same opportunity.
Thanks very much, that wasn't a reflection on the officers, I just know with 12 councillors all wanting work done immediately, that there is a substantial sort of time delay. You've only got so many officers and so many ways you can do things, so thank you.
Thank you councillor Lane, a valid question. Councillor Stemp.
Thank you madam chair. I guess I just want to get an understanding of whether the club have delivered projects like this in the past, obviously they've been around for some time, I'm just curious to see whether they've, sort of, what, how they've managed projects in the past, please?
Yes, through the chair. So Beanley PCYC's most recent project was the provision of a boxing facility, and, and they certainly approached that with the same approach of leveraging off their partnerships to, to maximise the value from that project. It, it was a complex project and they, they certainly sought support from council during the delivery of that project to, to help them project manage, but the outcome for that community was a, a very good facility.
Thank you.
Nigel, can I just ask a couple of quick questions? The standard of the boxing facility met with council's requirements, we were satisfied with the outcome of that particular build?
Yes, through the chair, the facility's an excellent facility.
And today's report specifically relates to the actual project management of this particular project as opposed to support for the project more generally, is that right?
Through the chair, that's correct. So it's, it's only because the request is for the funding to be provided directly to the club. Given that this, this project does involve a number of aspects of what is a, an older facility and includes electrical service, plumbing, drainage and a number, another, number of other trades, it is complex and, and, and that where, that's where it can present a risk if the organisation doesn't have the adequate project management skills.
And can I just ask, have, have council done, entered into these kinds of arrangements in the past with clubs or groups?
Through the chair, under the LIP programme, the Local Infrastructure Programme, we have over recent times entered into arrangements where the funding was provided to, directly to the clubs. They have been for more minor projects, fencing projects, that type of thing. Our experience with other funding projects, not necessarily under the Local Infrastructure Programme, where the clubs have secured funding from external sources, we have experienced problems where the, the, the quality just hasn't met the requirements and council had to go back and undertake further works to, to bring them up to standard.
So correct me if I'm wrong, in a nutshell, your recommendation is not to support the funding for fear that it may not meet up to expectations of council, is that correct?
Not so much that, it's just the, the, the risk is that the club in project managing the project could get themselves into some, into some difficulty and therefore that might come back on council to, to either support them in delivering or rectifying it, which is what we would do anyway in delivering the project directly.
Thank you, thank you for the clarity. I'll go to councillor Bradley and then councillor Bennon and then councillor Murphy, thank you.
Thank you, I probably would like to hear from councillor Murphy before I say what I was going to say.
It's on councillor Bennon.
Through the chair, so do you have any look at, does, do you have any look into the project of works that they're doing, there's a scope of works and the contract that's going out, or does the councillor do that? And if, the part that I don't understand from being in the building trade, is if you don't do the job to your specifications, then you don't get paid. So if a building contractor goes in there, that's licensed, which they have to be, and they don't do the construction up to specification, they haven't fulfilled their scope of works, they wouldn't get paid. So when we're saying that if, you know, that they fall themselves into trouble and get some difficulty and can't do it up to spec, the council have to step in, which would cost money, well they wouldn't get paid anyway. Like everything that we do in the building trade has a warranty, has specs on it, has to be done a certain way, otherwise you just don't get paid. So I don't understand why there's the, the bit of fear there, if it's managed properly and, just probably through to councillor Murphy, have they looked at who's, who's building it and obviously you've got a lot of knowledge in that through your real estate background, so I don't see the worry.
So through the chair, so with the delivery of this type of project where the funding goes directly to the club, they're responsible right from the beginning of the project, which is in preparation of any, any briefs to the contractors, and it, and often as you would appreciate, if that brief isn't adequately scoped, then the contractor will only deliver what, what has been put in scope, and that's where there's a risk. An inexperienced project manager, there's a risk that they will miss those elements. Now as far as council's input into that, the, the club will be required to provide a landowner's consent request to undertake works on a council facility. That requires them to detail what works they are going to be undertaking, and also they are required to get any required building approvals or any other approvals associated with that. But in saying that, we don't actually, because we're not project managing it, we don't review the briefs, we don't undertake any other assessment apart from confirming that they've got all the approvals that are required. So that's still the risk, it's about the adequacy of their brief to, to deliver the outcome and, and as I said, with an older building, that's when things can be discovered that weren't, weren't, they weren't aware of at the start of the project.
Through the chair, so being the landowner, which the council is, wouldn't we look at that scope of work, so make sure it's, even though we're not project managing it, we still own the building, we still own the land, so wouldn't we look at that?
Through the chair, so we would give it, we would obviously understand the scope of works that they're undertaking, but as we're not project managing it and the resourcing that we have for our project managers to deliver other projects, it's, it's, I guess, about managing those resources. If we're going to provide that level of oversight over the project brief and the consultants that tender and, and provide that level of support, we should just be delivering it right up front, that, that's the risk.
Thank you councillor Bennon. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you through the chair. To Nigel and Katie's team, I'd like to say thank you for bringing this forward, and I understand the view of the council and why you have not recommended this, because it's not for every club. In this particular instance, PCYC Beanley and Mark and Bob have delivered projects before. They did have a learning curve with that first project, but have learnt valuable lessons from that. So this is $50,000 to, to do some minor renovations of the club and reconfigure the club so that it flows better and works better. Of the $50,000 that is delivered from the two years, they can go and source extra funding, of which they've already started and they have an extra $8,000 to add to this kiddy. However, I'm mindful that if we were to go through the council offices here, this project could be far larger in expense. We're trying to get the best bang for buck, if you like, to, to deliver a project for our rate palate dollar. So I have every faith in Mark and Bob delivering this project. They will have the funds go through to the Smarti Grants, which, in which they will have to acquit all that funds through that Smarti Grant, so there will be some, some sort of accountability that comes from the club. I will be recommending that we change the motions to just remove the word 'not' and before, for the reasons that I believe that the club can deliver this project on time and on budget, with the assistance of the sport and rec officer to just help them with normal guidance, but they will be delivering the project themselves. So they're changing the entrance to, to the PCYC, this is, the outside building is already done, it's just internal stuff. They're shifting the gym from the middle of the PCYC to the great hall and turning the gym into a function room. They're also making sure that their toilets are compliant. So the toilets aren't changing, they're just making them compliant to add in that disability factor as well. It is just a matter of bang for buck and getting it delivered on time. So I ask my fellow councillors if you would mind supporting me in this project.
I value the advocacy of the divisional councillor in trying to deliver great outcomes for her community. Thank you councillor Murphy. I still have a couple of comments and then I'll loop back to councillor Murphy if she has any closing remarks right at the end. So councillor Bradley.
And I will echo that sentiment as well, that you're advocating on behalf of your community councillor Murphy and you're doing a fantastic job. I do have concerns, having been here for a long time now, and I won't echo how many years that has been, but there is a reason this policy is in place and that's because of the pitfalls that Nigel has mentioned. I feel very uncomfortable to support councillor Murphy, my apologies that this is the case and I understand you want to get bang for buck, and that's purely because I know of those pitfalls. Just for example, I know it's internal work and, and, but I'll just give you an example of what happened during administration, which I found out through, and it has been confirmed since, that during the construction of like Underwood Park redevelopment, for example, all sorts of things were found, asbestos. It just blows the budget way out of what was foreseen in the, at the start. So this is, this is exactly what Nigel was referring to before, the pitfalls of what they, the officers can project manage that, they're experienced at doing that, and I understand that there's members of the club that you're referring to, that you believe are confident in doing it and they've learnt lessons et cetera in the past, but the risk for council on a council building is that it could become like a minefield, but that's just, I'm not willing to take that risk.
Thank you councillor Bradley. Councillor Lane?
Through you madam chair, I'm just wondering whether I can ask councillor Murphy a question, if that's okay?
To me.
Okay, so councillor Murphy, this came up with Logan Brothers Fence, and one of the things that I did was I, as divisional councillor, gave a guarantee that if additional costs were incurred as a result of any hiccups, that I would put a reserve on divisional budget for those hiccups. Is that something you're prepared to do as part of this?
Thank you through the chair, absolutely councillor Lane. I believe that, that we will still be way out in front as a cost wise, if we were to even port another $25,000 away with the club delivering this service. So yes, I would absolutely put funds away if required.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nigel, is that something we can actually do, that, that there's capacity for contingency from the LIP budget to, if the project blows out?
Through the chair, so with the LIP programme being fairly new still, the, the intent was certainly that the way funding was allocated from the divisional allocations would allow for overs and unders, so if a budget was underspent, then that funding would still be available to the divisional councillor to reallocate, and similarly it would pick up any overspends. We would try to minimise that as much as possible obviously, but that was intent, so that we didn't have the situation where a project couldn't progress because of the lack of funding. So the opportunity is there, yes.
Thank you Nigel. I've got a councillor, a question from councillor Raven and also a question from councillor Bennon. Councillor Bennon, does your question relate to what councillor Lane just raised? Then I'll come back. Councillor Raven?
Thank you madam chair, and councillor Lane stole my thunder a little bit, but I understand that I did that to her yesterday from the chair, so she's getting me back. The, when we looked at the brothers' pricing, there was such a significant difference in where council was including its contingency and its price, that the, and the club also had an extra ability to put social pressure on, on contractors to say, we're a not-for-profit club, we do so much work in the community, sharpen your pencil for us, give us your best price. Council doesn't have the ability to turn around and say that, and in fact the opposite often happens, because people go, I'm quoting for a government organisation, this is great, I'm going to whack an extra 20% on because I know that they've got deep pockets. So I support the councillor in trying to achieve best bang for buck, best value for money, and as long as she is aware, and I know Nigel knows this, and has seen it very acutely on council projects, when you get unexpected variations that no one can control, like asbestos in the ground, a great example councillor Bradley, nobody can, nobody can plan for that, and it means that there must be a source of funding to cover those extra costs. So if there are unexpected variations, the risk sits with the, the Division 12 local infrastructure budget, because it is the only source of funding for this project. So if the councillor's happy to accept that risk and acknowledge that she may actually have to spend more money, if council does have to come in and repair works that were either done below standard or not to spec, then I'm happy to support it. So if that's the commitment she's happy to make, then I'm happy to support her supporting her club.
Councillor Murphy?
Thank you through the chair. Councillor Raven, thank you for, for your sentiment. The PCYC as well would be supportive of this project as well through head office. PCYC of Beanley is the number one PCYC in all of Queensland as well, and has the ability to raise funds through their community. So they've already demonstrated that with an extra $8,000 already in the kiddy to put towards this project. So I'm sure not only myself as the community councillor, but also the community whole would get behind them as well, and assist them if their funds were needed to be gathered. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillor Bennon?
Thank you through the chair, I understand what councillor Raven's saying, I just, I've been seeing what councillor Murphy's actually doing, I'm happy to look at it from a building background, but I don't think there's anything in that scale that's going to, we're not doing anything load bearing or major civil works or underground works where anything can blow out, it's only a $25,000 spend, so I think the risk is a lot lower. So like if, if it was something major, like a major hard stand or something, I'd probably be more hesitant as well, but I think the size of the project that they're doing, that there's not much that can go wrong with it. I did support councillor Lane with the Logan Brothers, but it does open a can of worms, which we all were aware of, and everyone hates that word precedent, but once we, I find it uncomfortable to support one council and not another, because there's no favouritism in here as we all know. So I just think we do have to be careful and understand the size and the scale of these projects that we're going to support. I'll always support the smaller ones, but if it's something that is major construction, I think it is getting dangerous. So that's all madam chair.
Thank you councillor Bennon. Did you have a comment regarding that Nigel?
Through the chair, I acknowledge what councillor Bennon's saying, the project's $50,000, 25 over two years, and, and there is still some risks with old buildings, as we're finding with the butter factory, but that's another story. Thank you.
I have a question from councillor Wilcox and then we'll round out the debate with councillor Murphy. Thank you councillor Wilcox.
Thank you, through the chair. I, I would like to support this, I would be very keen to see how this progresses, and then I could possibly do the same for one of my own clubs. But I am, one concern I do have is the current toilet block, because this is the same as one of my facilities. Altering it and modifying it for persons with a disability will then, this trigger the whole building to be code accessible, or the terminology around that, what will, what will happen with that?
Through the chair, so my understanding is that as soon as we do undertake any works to change amenities, it does require those amenities to be brought up to the current standard, so if they're not to current standard, they don't have to be until you start works in them. So the building approval would require those facilities, it doesn't mean the whole building has to be brought up to current, but those components of the works which you are undertaking will need to comply with current standards.
Thank you. If there aren't any further questions, I'll now hand over to councillor Murphy for final remarks.
Thank you through the chair, I'd just like to address some of those concerns. So the PCYC has already engaged a certifier, and with regards to architects et cetera, that they have learnt valuable lessons from doing the boxing ring. The boxing ring was an actual building outside the current building, it was a brand new build, and they got through that process themselves as well. I'm not saying that there wasn't hiccups, but they certainly have learnt the processes of what, what needs to be undertaken with regards to these sorts of renovations. And I totally agree with the council officers and, and Nigel and Katie, this is not for every club. I certainly wouldn't be extending this sort of availability to any club in my area, because I totally understand that there has been clubs pre, pre us that have struggled and some that may have even been possibly suitable, but that have then failed at the end of the day and council has had to come back and pick up the pieces. I fully understand that. The reason we have done this, it's over two years, it's $50,000, they can leverage the funds, they have got an architect and a certifier already in place. It is minor modifications with inside the building and that's why I'm going that way with bang for buck. I, as a councillor, will not be trying to bring these to, to the table every month, I can tell you that right now. So I just ask for your support where you feel that it's right. I understand that if you wrote against that, that, that is your prerogative and I do understand fully what you're saying, but I'd really like your support for this particular project. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Murphy, and I too have tremendous confidence in the Beanley PCYC and the great outreach they do in the community, and recognise that this particular request wouldn't be suitable for all groups that are coming forward to council. Councillors, what we're going to do is you've actually got a motion on the board behind me, which is the councillor recommendation, we're going to put that motion up first. If that motion fails, councillor Murphy has provided an alternate motion that I'll put to the, put to the group. So councillors, can I have a mover for the recommendation that's on the board behind me? I have a mover in councillor Bradley. Do I have a second for the motion behind me on the board? There being none, that motion has failed. We'll just take a moment to get the alternate recommendation on the board behind me, the only variation being that the word 'not' is dropped from the motion. Certainly councillor Bradley, go ahead.
I will support councillor Murphy, but I have expressed my concerns, so hopefully that does not eventuate.
Thank you councillor Bradley, and I did take on board very seriously what you said, we have found ourselves in challenging circumstances in the past. Councillors, you have an alternate recommendation on the board behind us, that the Special Consideration Local Infrastructure Programme for Division 12 PCYC Queensland Police Citizens Youth Welfare Association for Facility Upgrades as detailed in the Report of the Sport Leisure and Facilities Branch Manager dated 17th of March 2021 be approved. Do I have a mover for that recommendation? Councillor Murphy has moved that recommendation. I have a second for the recommendation in councillor Hall. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillors, that has been unanimously supported, I would have to say that's a four-leaf clover for councillor Murphy today. Thank you everyone. Now we're now moving on to items of general business. Do any councillors have any GB for the manager, Mr Brown? Thank you councillor Russell.
Thank you so much for your indulgence today chair. Today I'd like to share a little about one of the sporting clubs in Division Three, the Springwood Pumas at Low Oval. I want to start by acknowledging the heart and soul of both Andrew and Adrian, who have kept this club functioning against all odds for the past 15 and 18 years respectively. They've demonstrated that a positive, community-focused club culture can trump dollars, managing over the years to attract quality players and coaches away from, better over the years to attract quality players and coaches away from better-equipped clubs who can afford to pay them. They've certainly won their fair share of premierships, but their greatest achievements have actually been off the field. Over the past 14 years, the club has provided apprenticeships for 36 young people and provided employment for 15 others. This year, I'm quite excited about this one, they'll hold their fifth annual Indigenous Round. The event was described as the best Indigenous Round celebration outside of the AFL. It has twice been nominated for the Logan Sporting Event of the Year. Last year, they raised more than $10,000 for the family of one of their undereights who was fighting a rare cancer. It's no secret that I don't know a lot about sport, in fact only since becoming a councillor have I really learned the difference between the different codes of football. Sorry dad. What I do know however, really well, is about community groups and how successful ones make a real difference in countless people's lives. And the Pumas are the real deal. Unfortunately though, heart and soul can only trump dollars for so long. Low Oval is in urgent need of upgraded facilities. It broke my heart to learn that the Pumas were so good that they were invited to join a newly revamped state league competition, but ultimately not accepted because their facilities weren't quite up to scratch. What I have in my hand is a form committing $50,000 of Division Three's local infrastructure funding, which I yesterday submitted to council Sport and Leisure Facilities team manager, Mr Brown. It will secure for the Pumas new goalposts, back nets and fencing. I want to express my gratitude to manager Mr Nigel Brown and his team for working with me collaboratively over the past few weeks with an understanding of the time-sensitive nature of these works. With the next season starting on April 10, which is looming, Mr Brown knows that it is imperative that at least the goalpost component of this is delivered as a matter of urgency. And I'm really grateful that he's committed, as committed as I am to ensuring this happens. I appreciate your hard work and empathy to the situation Nigel and I'm sure that the families of the Puma community does too. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Russell. Mr Brown, did you have any comments regarding the Pumas?
Through the chair, I just echo everything that councillor Russell has just said. I've got a little tingle, so thank you for that very positive feedback as well. And yeah, we'll work very hard to support them as we can through that process as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Russell. Councillor Bradley?
Oh gosh, that was beautiful, thank you. Springwood Pumas are probably one of the best clubs we have in our city. I've expressed in these council buildings many, many a times that they're actually a role model. They, when Andrew and Adrian first started out, the club was actually very close to going under. They had pokies, it was a dark and dingy building. It was not a very attractive place at all. And over the years, they have made that into a very family-friendly place. They've removed all the pokey machines. They're an absolute inspiration to all clubs and I think from memory Nigel, there was a report up in previous council which highlighted them as such as a role model. I don't know if you can remember that. It was what they were wanting to achieve, having a local business within their facilities to actually create extra funding for the club. That actually changed some of council's policies. So over the years, they certainly had a lot of money spent on Low Oval and the intention was for them to go to Cronulla Park and I won't go into that now or here. Obviously there's things that have happened before our time this term. But certainly their retaining wall, their whole field has been revamped, but inside that building, the club have changed it. And I don't know if there's still yoga there happening, but you know, it is just such a beautiful place and well done to you, councillor Russell, to have, very fortunate to have the club in your area now. And I'm very sad that it's not in Division One.
Thank you, thank you. I think that councillor Russell will continue the great work down there and support the Pumas. So I'm feeling a lot of love in the room with our community today. Do we have any other GB for the manager? Nigel, do you have any GB for the councillors?
No, thank you.
Thank you. There being none, I actually, it was remiss of me to have not mentioned before, for the council record, referring back to item 4.1, which was of course the local infrastructure programme special consideration project for sports and facilities. For the council record, we've requested that councillor Murphy provide a statement of reason for supporting the variation to the officers' recommendations. Councillor Murphy, are you in a position to provide that to the records clerks?
Yes, thank you through the chair. So the PCYC is undertaking minor renovations with the external opportunity to raise further funds from an outside source. This will be their second renovation for the club under this arrangement and I fully support this process.
Thank you councillor Murphy. If you can please submit that to the council officers and we'll add that to...
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. There being no further GB for the manager, does anyone have any GB for the director of community services? There being none, I just have a comment that I'd like to make. Katie, it would be appreciated if you could please pass on to the media team, my sincere thanks for orchestrating ABC Radio to come out to the Logan Village Green. I know that councillor Lane was down there for the day, as too was councillor Raven, but we actually got some amazing uplift for the entire city, residents from Division Six, residents from Division 12. And ABC Radio later moved across to the library at Springwood as well, and the mayor was presenting there too. So could you please thank council's media department? It was an incredibly great day of celebration for our city, which I tremendously support. Ms Barton Harvey, do you have any GB for the councillors? There being none, councillors, I would like to say that that completes our agenda for today and I declare the City Lifestyle Committee meeting of the 17th of March concluded at 9:30 AM and the meeting of the City Governance Committee will commence in 10 minutes' time. Thanks everyone.